Are y'all ready? Okay, good evening, everyone. I'm gonna call the order. The May twentieth, twenty twenty-four, regular meeting of the Haywood County Board of Commissioners. Our first order business will be our pledge of allegiance, and then after that, I'm gonna ask our sheriff to come forward for the invocation. So if everyone please stand for the pledge.
James, chapter three, verses seventeen and eighteen says this. But the wisdom from above is first of all pure. It is also peace-loving, gentle at all times, and willing to yield to others. It is full of mercy and the fruit of good deeds. It shows no favoritism and is always sincere. And those who are peacemakers will plant seeds of peace and reap a harvest of righteousness. My prayer today centers on this verse. And it is my prayer that we will continue to sow seeds of righteousness and to make peace and to have the wisdom that comes from above in order for us as a community to resolve the conflicts that come our way, to make the important decisions as a community that we need to make to live in such a way as will be pleasing to God. Please join me in prayer. Heavenly Father, thank you for this day. Thank you for the opportunity to gather as free Americans, and as we have read this verse of your scripture, we pray, Lord, that you would have it come into our hearts and let wisdom in peace and in love and kindness and with mercy and with full understanding that we must first seek what is right. May that permeate our hearts and all of our actions here tonight, Lord, every decision that has to be made and every consideration that is made here tonight as difficult decisions are made. May you please lend peace to these proceedings and wisdom to our minds. It is in Jesus's name I pray. Amen. Thank you.
Okay, tonight we have two public hearings. The first public hearing will be relative to the acceptance of a grant award to Haywood County for two million, two hundred and four thousand, six hundred and eighty-three dollars in community development block grant funding to upgrade and expand the armory facility to function as an emergency shelter and emergency management service facility. We have our community and economic development director, David Francis, here tonight to speak to that. Hello, Dave.
Thank you, Chairman, Commissioners. Hope everybody had a good weekend and a good Monday. This public hearing is relative to the intention of the county to secure fiscal year twenty twenty-two community development block grant funding under Title One of the Housing and Community Development Act to solicit input on local community development needs in relation to community development block grant funding for this in Haywood County. Haywood County submitted a funding request and has been recommended to be awarded the amount of two million, two hundred and four thousand, six hundred and eighty-three dollars in CDBG neighborhood revitalization rehabilitation funds, excuse me, funds to upgrade and expand the armory facility to function as an emergency shelter and emergency services facility. So what this, this next, you know, phase two of this project is will be to upgrade the emergency shelter as we did from two, from twenty twenty. Remember, we approved that grant and we did some upgrade to the armory facilities there. But we didn't have any funding to go into the basement there. So this funding will help, you know, bring HVAC to the basement area. And, you know, a story that y'all may not know, but when we had Fred Flood, we had to take in a lot of animals, you know, due to the flood. We housed those animals up at Tuscula High School. They stayed into a separate wing of the high school. So this funding will allow to set up a temporary animal shelter as well, you know, where the owners and the animals can stay in the same shelter together. That was one of the things that, you know, you know, Howard Martin brought to our attention is what, some of the things that we could do as we expand, you know, the emergency shelter for that. So that's one of the items that we're gonna take care of that as well. The big items are we're building an EMS base for the Clyde area. In twenty eighteen, the county, you know, had a study done about response times throughout the county. And our response times were lacking, you know, due to where, you know, we were housed in different places. Our Clyde base was at the town, town of Clyde for a while, and we've moved up here to the armory. Now with our growing community, we need to expand that EMS base as well, too. So this will give us a two-bay garage. It'll be a drive-through. And it'll also provide, you know, it'll be another building that'll provide storage. And, you know, to keep into the character of the armory building is, is, you know, some of the, our Tim Sisk, our director, he says that this is one of the best buildings that we own in the county is the armory. And so to honor that building, we're also gonna put a brick veneer facade on the front of the building as well, too. So it'll still honor the character of the armory. And so the, and then the rest of the improvements of the money is the site development improvements. As you can imagine, building a drive-through driveway and upgrading the road system through there, extension of water and sewer, we're upgrading the fiber optic, you know, connections there as well, too. But there's just, you know, those types of items add up to, you know, a big ticket of cost when you start, you know, doing this kind of upgrades. And so we were fortunate enough, you know, that there were performance on the first phase of this, the grant, that we were awarded this, the second grant as well, too. So any questions that you may have? Yeah, so these are HUD funds that come through and are administered by the state of North Carolina, Department of Commerce in particular.
And so communities apply, and we did apply, and then we were selected as one of the recipients?
Yep, yep.
Okay, okay. Anybody else have any questions?
David, will that, will that do anything on the, you know, where they had the shooting range in there?
Yep, so part of, part of phase one was that, so that was mitigated. We had to get, there was a lot of lead abatement that needed to be completed, and so that was part of phase one. So that part of the armory will be used for storage for emergency, you know, services when, emergency needs as well, too. When Fred Flood happened, that whole armory was full of water. I mean, stacked higher than me throughout the whole building because, you know, the generosity that the community and other communities showed us during that time. So there'll be some storage in there, but most of that storage where the shooting range is will be for, the storage for, you know, emergency purposes like that.
Yeah, I just wondered about where the walls had cracked and stuff. We went on that tour and stuff. Make it usable for different things or something.
Yeah, so, yeah, so, but that's, but that's what that's slotted for. There's pallet racks will be, you know, go into that side of the building there to be able to store, you know, water. Because like you said, it was, you know, kind of a, you know, we had to move through, you know, boxes of Clorox, you know. We got, you know, these huge boxes of diapers. So be able to, you know, have that storage there. And the folks will be in the main bay, bay area where there's an issue there. And then in between times, we'll be able to use it for recreation and other purposes like that until we need it.
Well, we need to have a public hearing.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so anyone care to address the board on this issue? We have a couple, three public comment sessions tonight, but does anyone wanna address the board on the grant funding that we have tonight? Okay, seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing, okay? Okay.
All right, thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay. Okay, then the next public hearing will be to receive, receive public input on the proposed Haywood County budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five. And our budget analyst, Will Scarborough, is here to present that. Hey, welcome, Will.
Thank you. All right. Thank you for having me this evening, Commissioners. I will be presenting a basically condensed version of what you guys saw two weeks ago when Mr. Moore had presented the budget to you. And then we'll have time for any questions you may have or public comment on it. So this is basically a high-level breakdown of our revenues. As you can see, property taxes is by far our biggest revenue generator. We also have sales tax, which is fifteen percent of all the revenue we receive. Restricted and our governmental, which is thirteen percent roughly of the revenue that we receive. And that's typically reimbursements, especially in health and human services. We have interest earnings, which is basically when we have so much, like, relative money in the bank, we earn interest on that. And then we also have, which is important, the other financing sources, and that's where we have our fund balance. So we'll go into depth on a few of these that are really the major drivers. So property tax, of course, being fifty-three percent of our budget. It's a big driver, and we are leaving the tax rate at fifty-five cents. That is not changing from the current fiscal year. And that's using a valuation of ten point two billion. And our collection rate went down slightly this year. It will be ninety-eight point two nine percent, down from ninety-eight point three seven. But that's, in the grand scheme of things, not the biggest amount ever. And then a value of a penny is right over one million dollars. Next, we have sales tax. This is going up three percent this year, which is a pretty reasonable amount. This is based on projections of where we are this current fiscal year. It's been discussed a lot across different budget departments within the state, and everyone's pretty much on the same page that this revenue is slowing down across the state since COVID basically boosted it for those two or three years. We're basically going back to status quo. So this has only got a three percent increase, whereas we've seen up to eleven percent in previous years. It's not expected to do that going forward. This is the breakdown of sales tax between the college, the schools, and us, with the college being in blue, the schools being in red, and then the county being in green. The, both schools and college have their separate debt funds, which is their, where their sales tax goes to pay for their debt and their capital. And as you can see, they're all up that three percent across the board this year. This one is investment earnings, and it's kind of what we talked about a minute ago. We've been doing really well, and that has a lot to do with the one-day yield. Basically, two years ago, we were sitting at under a percent for our yield. Last year, around this time, we were at four point eight, and now we're at five point two five. So that money that we have in the bank that we aren't spending, it's basically, we're getting a lot of returns on that, which is incredibly helpful, but it's also one thing that, you know, won't last forever if the rates get cut. But as of right now, we're gonna account for that and make sure we're using it in this budget. So next, we have the major revenue drivers. As per typical, it's always gonna be salaries is a big part when we have merit and COLA. We have the retirement system, which again went up this year, and we'll go in a little more into depth for all of these. We have health insurance, which as all medical costs go up, you have to continue to reflect that and what, what we're budgeting for. Within operating the schools and college, we, of course, increase those based on the funding formula for the schools and the typical amount that we go up for the college based on their needs. Information techno- technology replacement. So we have a few different replacement items that are relatively high-dollar compared to recent years, and that's reflected in this budget. And then pretty much across the board for the county, software subscriptions, they're basically changing the model where we used to have longer contracts, but now it's almost going to the subscription-based where it's more frequent. So it's lower at that point in time, but the overall cost of the software goes up. And then capital, we have vehicles as we do every year. So general fund expenditure increases. So as you can see, compared to adopted FY twenty-four to twenty-five, it's up almost six million dollars. When we break it down, the vast majority, of course, is in public safety and health and human services. They have the most people in it. It's just what you would expect. Public schools is sitting at almost seventeen percent of the budget, is the third highest. And then we break down into the different other functional areas. When we look at those function areas, public safety and health and human services are first and fourth out of the top five of those function areas. That's expected just let, or specifically on salaries, but as you can see, we have big jumps in central services and also debt. The central services, we're gonna break down a little more in a couple of slides, but the debt is almost entirely the new debt for the jail interests. So you see that reflected in this. And then when you break it down based off of salary and benefits, operating capital, capital outlay and debt, the debt, of course, is reflected all the way to the right. Capital and capital outlay is actually down. Operating is up, but when you take out both the school and college operating increases and then those IT infrastructure replacements we're doing, that one's actually only marginally up compared to last fiscal year. And then salary and benefits, you expect to see that. So employee compensation, this year we have two percent merit and three percent COLA adding up to two point two million dollars. A little over that. We also have the Christmas bonus included for employees this year. We continue funding longevity and 401K. The medical insurance is only going up five hundred dollars per employee this year, which is better than recent years. And then the local government employee retirement system contribution for both normal employees and law enforcement officers, that LEO. They're both going up, and there is an expectation that that continues going up over the next few years. But we, of course, have to budget that. So new positions requested by department. Currently, we had eighteen positions requested, and that totaled one point seven four million dollars if we had funded them all. Unfortunately, we didn't have basically funds in the budget to do that. They all had merit, as you would expect. But we were really focused on making sure that we keep our best employees, and of course, you can't fund everything. So major operating costs, of course, we have the education operating allocation that we talked about. And those went up for a total of six point seven one thousand dollars. And then the information technology, this is one that I wanna touch on. It's the access control panels are basically what locks all the doors across the county. So we need to replace those. They're coming towards their end of life. They're not there yet, but we wanna make sure that we, of course, replace those before they hit their end of life. We have the NVR slash camera replacement, which is our cameras, of course, and then the recording system for those cameras. We have the VMware app volumes, which that is where we do our virtual. So when we have computers and they get on the virtual network, that's what we use. We also have money in the budget operating for revaluation, which is coming up next year. So we've gotta put money in to make sure that we can fund the things we need to fund for that to occur. And then state DMV fees are also up. We're getting more in the motor vehicle tax, but that's also reflected in the fees we pay for them to collect that for us. So vehicles and equipment, we're actually down in the number of vehicles we're replacing this year, which is a good thing because that means we've done a good job replacing them. And the overall dent decrease of how much we're spending in those vehicles is six hundred and fifty-eight thousand and some change. When you look at the amount of vehicles, the sixteen, twelve of those are for public safety, and all of these are replacement vehicles that we are not adding to the fleet. So capital projects, we have a lot of capital projects going on already this year. As you can see, we have the armory updates, the EMS base on Russ Avenue, Sim Circle property, Waynesville Library roof replacement, courthouse parking deck elevator replacement, and the new HVAC systems we have for our data rooms to make sure that they're properly maintained. So those are a lot of the big projects we're working on this year. So our capital was fairly limited in the budget just because there was so much on our plate, not to mention the jail expansion. So we have a couple of HVACs, one for the courthouse and one for the LEC. And, you know, there's just a lot going on, and you can see that. So quickly, basically, this is our debt for the next few years until it falls off. But this year, we've got that two point eight total debt, and that includes the interest for the jail. And then you see the bump for next year when the principal is added. So we'll pay both the interest and the principal next year. And then it progressively over time goes down as we pay off that principal, where the interest will go down with it. And for the schools and college, the schools have a bump that they will see next year, but then they pretty dramatically fall off over the next few years, and the college is already having their debt fall off. So all in all, we're in a very good position when it comes to debt. So outlying years, we already talked about revaluation. That's coming up this coming fiscal year. Employee increases to continue to stay competitive, each one percent of COLA merit we do right now is about four hundred and forty-five thousand. Health insurance probably won't go down. We don't expect to see that as medical prices keep rising. And then the retirement system, of course, is already expected to continue going up for the next few years. We have increased service demands. We're working on a capital replacement plan. We're already doing a lot of planning, but to formalize it, we're gonna work on that and make sure that we have a formalized plan buttoned up and ready to go. Again, we're already doing all of these things, but it's, it's just a formalizing and get it in a document. And then also EMS call volume, that continues to go up. You guys pass the convalescent transports to be able to help us free up some of our ambulances from having to do those. So it's just, you know, a sign of the times as people move here, as we, you know, see growth, of course, our services are gonna need to increase as well. The debt for the jail expansion, we've talked about jail operating increases. Once the jail is built, of course, we'll have to staff it. We'll have to prepare for feeding more inmates and having medical care on more inmates. So those are things that we'll see once the jail is built, and, you know, it's worth keeping in mind, knowing that's in the future. And then jail or library renovation and construction, we're already doing the roof. If there's more that may need to come, that, of course, is on our radar. So other funds, the health insurance fund increases three hundred and ninety thousand and some change from last year, which, of course, is due to that five hundred dollar increase per person. Workers' comp is up about ten thousand dollars. Separation allowance is flat. The nine-one-one fund is increasing two hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars, and that's primarily capital items, equipment, and computers. And then our solid waste fund is going up five hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars. And that has to do with repairs, maintenance, a replacement vehicle, and site funds for convenience centers in the MRF. The debt funds, the school's debt fund is increasing one hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars. And the community college debt fund is increasing almost, or a little over ninety thousand dollars, and that, of course, is where the sales tax goes. So those are those funds we were talking about. Other funds, so we have the register of deeds, recording fees, fines and forfeitures, and representative payees. We added these a couple of years ago. They're just something that's basically a pass-through, so we have those in those fund. And then occupancy tax, which is also a pass-through that goes to the TDA, the Tourism Development Authority. That one is going up, and that just reflects where we're at this fiscal year. It's higher than we budgeted this fiscal year, which is a good thing. But we just adjusted that to make sure that it was where it needed to be to be accurate. So then we have the road district fund. This one, we have one road district that is requesting an increase. In the previous presentation, Maggie Valley Country Club, we thought was going from nineteen to twenty, but when I reached out to them, that was a miscommunication. So they are not asking to increase their, their tax rate. But Norman Road is going from twenty cents to twenty-five cents, and the value of their penny is only five hundred and fifty-one dollars. So it's not very much, and when you're trying to, you know, repair the road, it makes sense. You might have to increase it a decent amount. Then we have the fire district fund, and in that district, or in that fund, we have Senator Pigeon, who is trying to, or requesting to increase their tax rate. I know Chief Plus is here tonight and able to answer any questions that maybe had. And then June Alesska Sanitary District is also requesting an increase, and Josh Nickel, I think I saw earlier. Yeah, so he is here also if you all have questions about that requested tax increase. So public inspection, the budget is available in the Office of the Clerk, which is in this building. And then we also have a copy of the budget in the main library for anyone who wants to review it. And it is also on the county website if anyone wants to thumb through it in the comfort of their home. And then next steps, you all will consider budget adoption at our next meeting on June the third, twenty twenty-four. So, yeah. If you guys have any questions, I can answer those now.
Am I got any questions for Will? We've had hours of meeting with y'all, so it's probably why we're a little bit silent. I was wondering, Johnny, do you wanna, please, do you wanna comment any on your? Yeah, you might just, yeah, if you don't. I'll get you and Josh to come up and just say kind of what y'all are doing. Because this is a bigger platform probably than your public hearing, or rather, your meetings. Let more people know.
So there was three reasons that we were asking to increase the rate one cent. First one is it's gonna allow us to have two paid firemen there twenty-four hours a day. One will be full-time, the other physician will be staffed part-time, which saves us on benefits, the health insurance and other things like that. The other, another thing is our build, the main part of our building, the largest part of it was built, started in nineteen seventy-eight, finished in nineteen seventy-nine. The roof on that building's been recoded twice. We can't keep the leaks under control, so it's gonna have to have a new roof. I'll circle around back to that in a minute, but the third item is we got a thirty-six-year-old fire truck that is in need of replacement. It's still usable, but it's, it's end of life. It's getting close. We're looking two to three years out, getting a new one to replace it. So circling back to the roof, new fire trucks, when our building was built seventy-eight, seventy-nine, a fire truck was seven and a half to eight feet tall. We got ten-foot doors. Today, a fire truck's over ten feet tall. They won't fit in a building without special order and adding extra cost. So part of the, trying to get the roof redone, we're looking at raising the roof on the front side of the building to give us twelve-foot doors. So we don't have special order of fire truck and pay extra money. And then dress the, or bring the building up to better conditions. It's not good condition now. The skeleton's good. Some of the siding's starting to deteriorate. The gutters are gone. So in the process, it's a hundred, almost a hundred thousand dollars to put a roof on the building and new gutter. So trying to incorporate, putting new siding on it, putting a nicer wainscote around the building, things like that. We're working with the engineers and a contractor right now, trying to get a design. Not real, not got a price totally yet, but we'll pay for that in a future budget with, and with loan, with a loan, which will come to you to talk about. But, and part, part of our money from savings, same thing with the truck. But in the past three But in the past three years, this budget was forty-nine, forty-nine thousand, three hundred and forty-nine dollars and seventy-seven cents in the red. But in the last three years, in twenty-three, twenty-four, it was thirty thousand, eight forty in the red. Twenty-two, twenty-three, fifteen thousand, three forty-one in the red and in twenty, excuse me, I skipped over it. Twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four was thirty thousand, four, eight forty. Twenty-two, twenty-three was fifteen thousand, three forty-one. So and then our current budget was twenty-seven thousand, nine hundred and fifty-nine dollars in the red, which we balanced those out of our fund balance. So with these, these things we need to do to our building, replace the truck, we can't continue to balance our budget out of our savings. So that's the reason we requested a one one-cent increase in the tax rate.
Thank you, Johnny. Appreciate that. Okay. Hey, Josh, did you wanna? I appreciate you coming out, Josh, you and Johnny.
So our tax increase is ad verum tax and ad verum tax pays our debt service. So we get our loans to the state revolving fund for water sewer projects strictly. And the in in essence, our board has elected to raise the tax because it's never increased. And and the ten, I mean, it's been over thirty years that the six cents has not changed. And we've been able to to take care of our debt through that. But we have a sizable residential projects coming up in the future for a lot, over a thousand residents or over two-inch water lines that are, don't meet regulations. And we know we're gonna be forced to replace those. We want to be able to provide fire protection. And so you're gonna have to increase those to six-inch lines. And we're we're building up a base to be able to pay back those loans in the future. So that's that's what it's about.
Anybody have any questions? Okay. Well, I know, you know, we we had met or I had met with you and some of our staff and and then with Representative Pless from the from the state. And I think you guys have about ten million dollars in urgent need now because of, well, just you just need that.
Capacity.
I think one of them was a water tank that would help some areas and then what was the other, the?
Well, it was the Oak Park Residential Community, and that's one. But the, you know, we're thinking ahead because there's there for Oak Park, there's ten other communities in our district that have the same problem. And, you know, the 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 tank project to help Haywood Community College and that end of our district, you know, we're we've considered under our current ad verum tax structure and our current debt. But we're looking forward, you know, so we don't get caught in in a situation where we're in emergency.
Right, okay. Yeah, and I know Broy Hill Children's Home up there, they they don't have a lot of pressure because and that tank would would resolve that in that whole community, really.
Correct. And right now, they don't have fire protection.
Right, right.
The hydrants can't be used. So that's when we met with with Pless and you. And we're we're still urgently pursuing that, but we're also looking ahead at the other residential projects.
Okay. Well, I know those lines were probably put in in the, well, you've been around since the sixties, the district has, I believe.
Sixty-two.
Sixty-two, okay. So a lot of those lines are probably reaching their age and everything and probably too small, so.
They are. And a lot of them, technically, we inherited. Other people did them, developers did them, and then they gave them to the district. And back during the rural water process, when they were trying to get everybody off wells, they didn't have the regulations that we have today. So, you know, not only do are they old and undersized, but they don't meet current regulations. So we're constantly having to keep up with that. That's correct.
Yeah, this and now you have to to expand your water lines, I think it has has to be engineered through this and the state accepted before you didn't have to do that. So I could see how you'd have just developers putting in lines probably the cheapest way possible.
Oh, it was.
And it looked good, you know, for a while, but then they'll start aging, so.
We just, we've outgrown that.
Right.
You know, through the state revolving fund, the whole process, you have to be in, it has to be engineered, it has to meet DEQ regulations and get permitted that way, so.
And then the revolving fund, I know you have, I know there are grants that you can get from the state and you guys have applied every year. And it and it seems like the western end of the state never gets anything. It's always the mid and west, eastern bit parts.
That's correct.
And I think that's what you you had noted, that nobody in the west had gotten grants in a while, maybe from the.
So we we, a board member and my engineer went down to Raleigh to meet with DEQ. And the last funding cycle, they awarded ninety million dollars. And the furthest west was Wake County, which was Raleigh. And two of those, out of the ninety million, got over sixty million. And one was Sanford and one was Wilmington.
Okay.
And and, you know, that's what we're up against. And but we continue religiously every every cycle to keep applying.
All right. Well, I appreciate that. And we were trying to find more funds for you. Commissioner or Representative Pless told me the other day that they would not be able to do anything this year because evidently there's not, it it's evidently there, they don't have as much this year as they have in the past. So so we're hoping maybe in twenty-five that we can look at that again, so, but.
Just so I understand correctly, did you say you hadn't adjusted your rates in thirty years? It went from six, it's been six cents that long?
Yes.
It's remarkable. Well, I would encourage you to keep going down to Raleigh to DEQ and and, you know, giving your message. So I think we have a great legislative delegation right now. And that state line keeps moving west from Hickory. I've always heard it, you know, North Carolina state line stops in Hickory. But I I think we're seeing some breakthroughs with that. So, you know, keep trying in that situation. One other question, does your board or have you ever considered, maybe this could be a question for Frank, our county attorney, is there any mechanism for developers who come in and put these big projects in? Is there any mechanism for them to cost, share some of that cost with putting in the initial water lines and sewer lines to service? These developers are obviously coming here to make bundles of money. Is there any mechanism in place where we could ask for a cost share upfront?
Well, in our district, when development comes in, that requires an extension, we we hold them, they have to put it in and they have to put it into our specs and standards. And then they'll convey it to us and we'll take ownership and have, so that is in place.
Okay.
It it's just, it's sporadic, you know, and it's it's piecemealed, you know. And and I would say five years ago, we did a a major capital project to improve all the trunk lines. You know, our big lines through the center of our district. And what what we're seeing is is the the spur-off lines, which are the residential lines. So when new development comes in, we hold them accountable for putting it in. We're not gonna put it in for them. They will. But it it's it's not like a developer's gonna come in and say, all right, I'm gonna take, you know, these thirty neighborhoods and and build it out. They're doing them piecemeal. And that's that's what we've inherited, and so we're trying to make it better.
Is your board unanimous in requesting this increase?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, thank you, Josh. Appreciate you coming out tonight. Okay, okay.
I have a couple of questions, Mr. Chairman, for Chief Pless, if that's okay.
Yeah, I'm not giving, yeah. Come on back up, Johnny. Sorry. I I didn't give him a chance, actually, so that's probably on me.
Relatively simple questions. Does your board, are they unanimous in requesting this increase?
They are.
And one other question about the fire truck that that's in consideration for this increase. Now, we had a meeting down there, I think several of us went, when we discussed replacing a fire truck. Is this is this another?
That's the same truck.
It's the same truck.
Because of the trouble we run into getting it to fit in the building, we put it on the back burner till we do something with the building.
Well, that's probably a pretty good idea. You don't want something like that sitting out in the weather.
Well, that and we don't want to incur the extra cost because as sure as they can build one to fit in a building, but as you know, if they have to special design it, it's money involved, so.
So you said about two years. That is, that's about the lead time on something like that now?
Depending on the manufacturer's anywhere, what I'm hearing is anywhere two to four years, depending on the manufacturer to get from the time you place the order to you'll receive the truck.
What's your turnaround time on construction, new roof, new doors?
There, the contractor we've talked to, fortunately, our building, when it was built, was built under a thirty-pound load for the roof. So it's more than strong enough to support the added supports for the roof to raise it up. So he he says nine months, he can have it finished at the most, so.
But I'd like to say thank you for, you know, serving that community. And I would encourage all residents to participate in your local fire department board meetings.
It's a job for everybody.
All the volunteers that volunteer for those board seats, you know, I commend those folks. And so all the fire departments are supposed to put a public notice out for their yearly meetings for representation from the community and have community input on items like this tax increase to your request. And so as city, as a city commissioner, I always place a lot of trust in in those communities to oversee these and and enact in good faith for their residents. So I appreciate that for your service.
Thank you.
And all those others.
Thank you, Johnny. Brian, I did have a question I forgot to ask. Will, have all the fire departments given you the meeting schedule for when they have their public meetings? Because they're supposed to have a public meeting advertised in the paper, in the local paper, I think, so the citizens can attend.
I I mentioned that when I presented the budget, the the recommended budget a couple of weeks ago. Have not heard back from Lake Logan about if they've had that meeting or if not, when it's scheduled. We, I'll send another reminder email tomorrow morning and be able to tell you at budget adoption. But as of this afternoon, I have not heard from Lake Logan.
Okay. So they'll be in violation of the state statute if they don't have that, I guess. That might be a frank question, but.
Actually, a part of the the, we have a contract between the county and each separate individual volunteer fire department in the in the different districts. Each of those districts has its own separate contract because they were just developed over the years. And in that contract is the requirement that they that they be in compliance with the state law of having that annual annually announced meeting. And so there it's it's both a violation of the, it's actually a violation of the state law, but it's incorporated in our contract with each with each volunteer fire department.
Okay. Would it be proper for our our county website, once we get the media notices, to post those?
Sure, you could, you just have to have, you have to have the state required notice, which is publication in a newspaper, general circulation, da-da-da. But you can have other additional notices in addition to just the the mandated required newspaper publication. So yeah, you could put it on your website if you wanted to and and give people the date and the time and explain what it's for. Because lots of folks, unless you're you're really into your rural community, you may not really know what that means, that they're having a, the fire district is having its annual meeting.
Right, yeah. Because if they're not advertising in the local paper, if we're not seeing it, nobody's gonna know. I mean, I'd like to know, you might ask them that the commissioners were wondering if, where they have, where they are advertising, if they did. And then it just has to be a, when you say a local or or?
That it's actually a highly defined term.
Okay.
And it's it's called a newspaper of general circulation. And it's a that that's legal for accepting legal advertising, as it's called. And and we have two of them in Haywood County, the Smoky Mountain News and the Wainsall Mountain Year.
Okay. So if they were advertised, if somebody advertised in a in a Buncombe County newspaper or Jackson County, that would not be considered proper. I guess I'm just asking.
Let us look into that one, just to be absolutely certain on that and.
I just don't like, I just don't like people being sneaky. Let's just put it that way.
And as far as.
I want the public, I wanna be transparent. I want everybody to know when these meetings are because that affects fire protection in their area and they and people need to know that, you know, when these meetings are so they can have public input.
We can change our process for for next year just a bit because usually we submit those documents to the fire departments and they just confirm when they held their meeting. But we could move it up and and ask for those dates ahead of time so we could actually publish them on the site, too.
Yeah, maybe we can require that they have that to us before, a month before, so many days before their meeting so that it can be advertised on our website as well. Because I think we we could almost be a clearinghouse for that, if you will, since we have two publications. Maybe you don't read the other one or something, then if it's on our website, if citizens can know, they can go there and and find out when those meetings are, so they can give input on on the budgets.
We'll work with them this fall so we can have that in place for for next budget season.
Okay. I think that'd be good for transparency. Okay. Okay, so I need to have public hearing, right? Okay. Would any care, anyone care to address the board on on just the budget, on their county budget or anything that we've discussed in this line item? Does anybody, would anybody care to address the board on that? Okay, sir, come on up. Just just state your name and just speaking to the microphone and you have three minutes. Appreciate you coming out.
My name's Craig Wegman. I'm the president of the Norman Road Association. And I just wanted to make sure you were aware that we had representatives here in case you had questions about that.
Oh, okay, sure. Go ahead. Yeah, you can go ahead and let us know what why that you're, you know, why the increase, I guess. And maybe explain a little bit about that. Sure.
The, I've been president since two thousand and twelve. And prior to my becoming president, they would often vote to spend money on beautification, basically. You know, mowing along the roadways. And we have a section, a half-mile section at the top of the mountain that has been neglect, completely neglected for decades because the homeowners up there are just part-time residents, or at least have been. Until the last, I don't know, six or seven years, we have some that are moving in more permanently. So the road at the very top is just completely, almost impassable. Last year, we spent ten thousand dollars to get it to where we could, you know, and that's, we did that with volunteers. You know, our, we have five basically of our community that pitched in and helped. And we we paid, the community paid for gravel and tar. And we we got that upper portion paved, not paved, but, you know, passable. But the main stretch of Norman Road is paved and it's started deteriorating about three years ago. And once that deterioration starts, it it speeds up pretty quick. So we're just trying to get the funds available to avoid a catastrophe and stay on top of the maintenance.
Where is Norman Road? What state road is it off of?
It's in Clyde off of Thompson Cove.
Okay, okay.
There's actually another little road. Hideaway Creek comes off of Thompson Cove.
Okay, okay. I know where that's at. Okay, okay. All right. Does anybody have any questions?
Any questions?
Thank you for coming out and making yourself available. Appreciate that.
It's always good to have that explanation. Okay. Anyone else care to address the board tonight? Okay, okay. So you know, when I'll close that public comment session, or period, rather. Okay, now we'll move on to public comment session. And as I said, please limit your comments to three minutes and just pull the mic down and speak into it. I have one person sign up to speak. Her name is Mary Ann Widenhouse. Welcome, Mary Ann. Yeah, Mary Ann.
I'm short.
That's okay.
Why don't you hold that up for everybody to see that, Mary Ann? There's a camera there, so everybody will know what you're speaking about.
Was that part of my three minutes?
No, you can go ahead.
Okay. As I said, I'm Mary Ann Widenhouse and I am, uh, a member of the local affiliate of the National Alliance on Mental Illness. Um, I've given you three pieces of paper. I just wanted to read a little bit about NAMI. There's one of the flyers in there that talks about us. We are volunteers dedicated to reducing mental health stigma and supporting and advocating for those individuals and their families living with mental health conditions in both Haywood and Jackson County. Our mission is to bring awareness, provide education and cultivate conversations that offer support and understanding for all those affected by addiction, trauma, suicide, mental health conditions in our communities. And just, um, just an aside, addict, people with, most people with addictions do have co-occurring mental health issues. I've been there, I've done that, I understand totally why that happens. May is Mental Health Awareness Month, and the reason I have that poster is we all need to be taking care of our mental health. Those of us with mental health conditions have to work harder and a little bit smarter, but we can manage our mental health conditions in such a way to successfully navigate our lives. One of the challenges with those, those of us with mental health conditions is that a lot of misunderstanding, a lot of stigma attached to mental illness and mental health conditions. Mental health conditions are medical illnesses. I cannot just get over it. It is not a character flaw or a character weakness. I have not create, committed some great sin, nor am I possessed by a demon. I have a medical condition and I want people to understand that, and most of you probably do, but a lot of people don't. In order to reduce the stigma and misunderstanding about mental health, this, and there's a, you have a flyer up there that looks like this, we're going to be showing a documentary that's called Orchestrating Change, this Friday at two o'clock at the Waynesville Library. I wanted to read a little bit about this. There's a little bit blurb on there about this orchestrating change. Orchestrating Change is a documentary film that tells the inspiring story, story of the Me Too Orchestra, the only orchestra in the world created by and for people living with mental illness and those who support them. Co-founded by Ronald Bernstein, once a world-renowned conductor, whose career was shattered when his own diagnosis of bipolar disorder.
That's okay.
Finished.
Yeah, you can go on. You're speaking for a group, so you can do five minutes.
Okay.
So I'll, I'll give you a few minutes.
Um, well, I'll be quick. His own diagnosis for bipolar disorder was made public. The mission of the orchestra is to erase stigma, one exhilarating concert at a time, as they rehearse, perform and prepare, prepare for a major concert. Those extraordinary musicians have no idea how much the orchestra will change their lives in poignant and powerful ways. So I just wanted to invite you all to attend this documentary. It is incredible. I've watched it, brought tears to my eyes, because these people went through tough times, yet they're moving forward in their lives through music. And so, hope to see some of you there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Ann.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay. Is it, would anyone else, uh, does anyone else have a public comment beyond that didn't sign up? Okay, see no one, I'll close the public comment session and I'll move to constituent concerns. Does anyone have any constituent concerns tonight? Do you have any to?
We've, I've talked about several with the county manager.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to bring up a, a few things. The chemical, or the hazardous waste collection last Saturday was a tremendous success. So successful, there was a traffic jam. And so I think that, I hope everyone got served. Appreciate the solid waste, Chris, and all the work that you guys did to facilitate that for the county residents. I know there was a lot of people asking me about it and there was a lot of interest, and I think the participation proved that. So thank you for everyone that worked with that. Also, uh, uh, I just wanna make a comment about the Armory, you know, and, and David's work on securing these grants. A lot of people are misunderstand, sometimes that these, these projects, some of these projects we've been able to accomplish the last couple of years have just been phenomenal with not, with federal and state dollars, not local tax dollars. And I know Brian and I talked a, a lot about that. We have boosted our public safety with the EMS bases and utilized the gift of the Armory. And, uh, of course, you don't want a three hundred thousand dollar ambulance sitting out in the hail and the wind and the rain and the snow. And so having the ability to do that, and I know a big part of that grant was that road. Uh, everyone knows that that road coming from the fire training center all the way up to the college, that we have to maintain that. And so I, I just, I just wanna thank all the staff that participated in that and just make sure everybody understands what our staff has been able to accomplish in us with, with non-local dollars. And, uh, you know, it's just been tremendous. Um, I also like to comment on two things, very positive. I know a lot of you maybe or may, may not have witnessed this, but, uh, we had the Aurora here two Friday nights ago. For those of you that got to witness that, that was probably a once-in-a-lifetime event. I came to Haywood County, you know, in the southern latitudes. I thought I'd always have to travel to Alaska or Iceland to see something like that, but it was tremendous. It's, uh, another feather in the hat of Haywood County, so it was just, uh, an awesome experience. And to the other commissioners and to our staff, I got a call from a resident from Clyde. I see the mayor of Clyde, sitting back there. Jim, it's good to see you and your group here tonight. We got a, I got a call, hardly ever get this kind of a call, but he wanted me to relay to the commissioners and the staff that he appreciated the good job that y'all are doing. Uh, we were able to submit a budget with no tax increase, wisely invested funds and, and spent, spent it wisely, and so we were able to accomplish that. He said, Tommy, I don't know how y'all did that with the meal closure and runaway inflation. Uh, he said, anybody's gone to the grocery store lately, you know, housing, food, uh, these, these factors, it's very easy to see, uh, the situation that we've crept into. But this gentleman from Clyde, Mr. Jones, wanted me to comment to y'all in the public meeting. He said, you tell them in the public meeting, I appreciate what they and the staff have done with the budget. And, uh, I think it was quite an accomplishment that we were able to do that without a tax increase incurred to our residents. So, uh, just wanted to make those comments, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Okay, and then on the hazardous materials, uh, Brian, I think you were gonna try to have more of those. Uh, you know, it's, it's good that a lot of people did show up with hazardous materials. It means they're trying to dispose of them properly. And I think it would behoove us to have more, uh, times to do that, because if you don't, then people may discard them irresponsibly. So, did you have some thoughts on that?
Only the, uh, Zondra, uh, Solid Waste, uh, went after a grant. We, we received a grant from the state for about sixty thousand dollars. And of course, we're gonna have to put some of our own money with it. Hopefully that, uh, we can design our, our own hazardous waste facility and, and hold these, uh, events maybe monthly. Um, not sure the timeline, everything's taken a little bit longer. It'd be great if we had it ready for next spring, but we're, we're working on that to, to where we can do it more regularly, cut down on the crowds, and then offer, uh, citizens a way to get rid of the hazardous stuff, uh, more often.
Okay. All right. Well, Ted Zondra, we appreciate that. Appreciate her, her standing on top of it. Okay, next order of business will be administrative and agency reports and presentations. And the first one will be our update on opioid settlement and the next steps. We have Southwest Commission Executive Director Russ Harris here tonight with some of his staff. Also wanted to say that we had sent out, uh, notices to all the towns, uh, to, to attend, because they'll be getting some of this also. And we did have Joy Garland, the, the county, the town manager of Clyde, as well as Clyde's mayor, Jim Trantham, here tonight. And I don't think we have anybody else in attendance, but I appreciate, you know, Jim, you coming out and Joy, uh, to come out to, to listen to this. So go ahead, Russ, and, uh, appreciate all your work on this.
Absolutely. Good evening, commissioners. So, um, as you probably know, Haywood County as part of the opioid settlement is set to get a little bit over nine million dollars over an eighteen-year period to help address this issue. For the seven counties that the Southwestern Commission serves, that amount is a little bit over thirty-five million dollars. So about two years ago, we started having a conversation with county managers around the idea of maybe joining together to do a regional plan for how to spend these funds. And the reasons for that were, number one, if every county was gonna have to go through the same planning process, it maybe didn't make sense to spend staff time and capacity doing the same thing seven times. So it would be more efficient to do it together. Um, also, there's the opportunity to come together as a group and learn best practices from one another. If one county's doing something, we want to, that works, we want other counties to have the opportunity to learn what they're doing. And then the other opportunity we saw was to leverage these funds and maybe make them go a little further. You know, thirty-five million dollars is a lot of money, but over eighteen years to tackle a problem of this size over seven counties, we wanted to be as efficient as possible. And maybe there's an opportunity, if counties are in alignment with what they wanna do, by putting your money together, you may be able to make it go a little further. So, um, about that time, Swain County called and said, well, we have a grant from Dogwood Health Trust to do planning around opioid funding. Why don't we give it to you all and you do a regional plan instead of us just doing one for Swain County? So Dogwood was amenable to that and we're grateful to them. Um, so we started working on this process and I'll hand it over to our consultants in a second. And that's, that's where the conversation will get a little bit higher level when they start taking over. But, um, I wanna stress, though, the process is local first. Like, we are, you know, working with the local staff to go and say, what are the local priorities you have that you wanna address in your county? These are your funds. You decide as a commission what you do with those funds. And the regional part of this really is the opportunity just to be a little more efficient, the way we work together. And if you have a neighboring county that wants to do something similar to what you wanna do, maybe you share a staff position, you share the cost of something. But there is no, you know, we don't have an end in mind with this. And so we're focused on the local piece of this first. So when we decided to do this, this is not our expertise. So we put out an RFP. We got several good responses back. Um, we put together a committee from the counties to help, you know, look at those and decide who they wanted to go with. And I think everyone, everybody on that committee had the same first choice, and that was Omni Institute, cause they checked all the boxes for us. They had worked with opioid planning before, they'd done a lot of strategic planning, and then maybe one of the more important things is they had worked in rural communities before, so they understood a little bit of what some of the challenges we're trying to address are. So I'm gonna hand it over to them. We have Aleila Kay and Emily Murillo, um, with us tonight, and they're gonna take you through what this process has done up to this point.
Thank you for having us this evening. Um, just to give you a very high-level overview of kind of the timeline, we started this process last summer, um, when we came on board as the consultants and completed a strengths and needs assessment regionally. Currently, we are in the process of formulating that regional strategic plan and county-level strategic plans, as well as implementation plans and plans to evaluate outcomes of that work. Um, current efforts that we've been, um, the last several months leading up to now is, is having, uh, county-level meetings at which we share findings and discuss with, um, participants, the county-level, uh, results of those needs assessments and how they align or don't align with the regional efforts as well. Um, so how we got to where we are today is that, um, as Russ outlined, Region A is supporting this process to provide all counties with the information to help you all choose between North Carolina's approved strategies. So they have two options that Aleila will talk about a little more in a moment, but Option A and Option B. And so we, um, formulated this regional needs assessment, um, developed county-level and regional data snapshots outlining data related to opioid use in communities. Um, we conducted a community survey, held focus groups throughout the region and interviews as well to identify priorities at kind of a really detailed level at that point. Um, then in February, we had a meeting with county leaders at which, um, folks voted on the highest priorities among those that, that emerged from the needs assessment. Um, and then we mapped those priorities back on to the North Carolina approved strategies. So as Russ shared as well, each county has full control over how to use these funds. Um, there can be county-level strategies for Option A or B, or the option to support regional strategies, or, um, more, uh, county-level collaborations, smaller county-level collaborations. So just to give you a really high-level overview of some of those findings, and we're happy to share, um, more information about participants in the needs assessment and the methods and all of that. Um, some of the regional findings, strengths to build on included a lot of existing treatment and recovery efforts that are already happening across the region. Um, folks indicated that collaborative partnerships throughout this region are very, very strong, and that efforts to reduce and prevent overdose deaths are already underway. So those are all great strengths to build on. Opportunities, we're building on those treatment, um, and efforts to prevent misuse and reduce harm. Improving connections to care was a really big priority across the region as well. So there may be existing opportunities, but people don't know how to access them, so improving that pathway to access care. And then reducing stigma across the region for people seeking treatment. So reducing the stigma associated with getting treatment and also increasing education around what the best practices are for folks, um, and services. A little bit of Haywood County-level context, the top survey priority in Haywood County was connecting people to care. So as I just indicated, kind of creating that pathway so that people can access the services that they need. Um, they emphasized Haywood County's unique mix of services available. And then in focus groups, folks really talked a lot about connecting people to care, um, through transportation, safe housing and treatment. They noted limited recovery housing or sober living, particularly the further west you get, um, connecting people to employment and then peer support. And positive shifts were noted. Already, there's a lot of work in that area happening in Haywood County.
Okay, I'm just gonna go over a little bit of the strategy options A and B. So these are the pre-approved strategy options that North Carolina has decided that everybody can spend their opioid dollars on. Uh, so Option A versus Option B. Option A are higher-level, shorter list of twelve high-impact strategies that North Carolina has gone through and established. Fifty-eight local governments so far have chosen Option A. Um, these, Option A comes with less reporting requirements, um, and essentially an easier approval process. Then there are additional strategies known as Option B. So they, Option B is a bigger list. It essentially incorporates a lot of the Option A strategies, as well as more strategies. Um, so far, only seven local governments have gone for Option B. It requires a little bit more of an in-depth collaborative strategic planning, um, and has more process requirements and reporting requirements with it. So the, the priority regional needs that map on to Option A, which is again, that little speedier process, fewer requirements, uh, that came out of our regional process with recovery support services, post-overdose response teams and naloxone distributions. So this came out of the needs assessment data, that these were needs, and these mapped on to those high-impact strategies, which I'm going to highlight right now. So this is the twelve high-impact strategies. The light blue indicates those top three priorities that came out for the region. Uh, but as you can see, there are others which folks can choose from different counties. And again, as Russ has highlighted, this is really a county-driven effort. You all have your funding, you have to decide how you want to spend it. And the regional plan is really just about giving you all information to help make those choices, again, within the parameters of either Option A or Option B. So this is the list of Option B. Uh, we also tried to highlight the same priority strategies, which really fall under the supporting people in treatment and recovery, treating opioid use disorder, and connecting people who need help and the help they need. So those connections to care. Uh, as you can see, this is just a little bit more of a longer list. It includes prevention and other strategies. And again, Option B has, um, more exhaustive process requirements and reporting requirements than Option A. and reporting requirements than Option A. So these are essentially the process requirements for each county around these opioid dollars. Every county has already established a fund to secure these funds in a special revenue, as well as filled out and authorized spending for this. So every county in the region that we've worked with has done these steps. So the next steps is really understanding the Option A or the Option B strategies and selecting those strategies. So we've provided the data from the communities gathered from residents, from providers, from everyone else in the community, which, again, we can share who participated in our data gathering efforts. Understood those three priorities are essentially for the region, but then every county does need to make their own determinations around which strategies, Option A or Option B, they want to choose. Then follow up with the awarding, and then the reporting requirements, and holding an annual meeting. These are essentially the requirements from the North Carolina process around this. So truly, the discussion that each county really has to have is around how aligned they feel that the county needs that they have are with our initial regional-level findings. So if there's alignment, great. If there's unique needs, that's great, too. What are the additional local needs in your county? These are things that we are going to be discussing and continue to discuss with county-level leaders. And which way are they going to go, Option A or Option B? And so we're having these discussions with folks. And really, what's wonderful about these opioid dollars, I'll just say, it's remarkable to have this amount of timeline on funds, the way it's structured. And then, of course, with the North Carolina strategies, either Option A or Option B are going to provide wonderful services for the substance use disorder community. And so it's really a high-reward, no-risk scenario here. So it's wonderful, wonderful opportunity. So again, we're working with counties and the region to make sure that we're helping in any steps that they need to move forward, helping do additional meetings as needed, gather additional resources to help them make these decisions, and move forward with the implementation and getting some of these awards out the door and funding good work in their community. Thank you.
Okay. Do you have any questions?
Just for the folks here and folks watching, just for their benefit, you know, I know this has been discussed now for some time, but, you know, could you just refresh everyone's memory about where these monies came from? Because we're at a budget meeting, and a lot of times, people say, ah, those are our tax dollars. You know, what do you, look what they're doing with their tax dollars.
That's right. No, not tax dollars.
I know the answer, but I'd like for you to just refresh everyone in the room and everyone watching. I'd like for everybody to be reminded of how this came about and where those monies came from, if you would, please.
Yeah, absolutely. So these are opioid settlement dollars. So I don't know if folks remember back in the day with the tobacco settlements with Philip Morris and all of that. These are a kind of similar thing where community after community saw such traumatic issues around Big Pharma pushing through opioids throughout the nation. And so one lawsuit after another followed. Every state filed lawsuits against numerous large pharmaceutical corporations. And so these settlements that are even still coming in and being settled still today are the result of many years, lots of suffering. But there is going to be a lot of dollars coming in, again, well-earned, unfortunately, for many communities to help support the mitigation and addressing the issues that all of the opioids that came through, a lot of these large pharmaceutical companies, has caused. So I, anybody else who has any more information, go for it.
I appreciate the explanation on that. I know there's, these were almost predators who knew they had a substance in these opioid pills that was very addictive. And they were predators for financial gain. I know there was one family in particular that really, really had to pay a lot. And they should have, because there was a lot of people died. A lot of people got addicted to these things just from a simple prescription after wisdom teeth being pulled out. They got over-prescribed. Doctors were given incentives to prescribe these things. Very ugly situation. And, but these settlement funds are coming back all across the nation to, for us to help folks that were impacted by this very bad situation from some nefarious drug companies and drug owners. So thank you for that explanation.
Would, I probably missed this, but would it be beneficial for several counties to pool their monies together and do a centralized facility, treatment area? Because, had y'all discussed that? Did I miss that, Russ? Probably.
It has.
We didn't specifically mention it tonight. And I think really that's where the conversation started with doing this regionally. At that point, there was a provider that was interested in coming into the region. And so this money wouldn't be enough necessarily to construct a facility, but there was talk of the legislature putting money in, and this money could be helped, could be put in to support that facility. That company has since left. That money did make it into the state budget. So at this point, I don't know if there's enough in it right now to be able to do that, but I think that really was kind of the initial thought, you know? And maybe that opportunity comes back around at some point.
So if we could, but if you could find an existing building, that would work, too. I don't think it would need to be too large. Or would you, would you house people there, actually?
I, you know, that's one of the things we would, we, we kind of asked at one point when there was talk of money coming from the legislature, we said, well, it'd be nice to have planning money just to be able to figure out. This is not my world. Like, so where would you cite this? What would be the feasibility of it? What does a business plan need to look like? So I think all those are really good questions, because I think that's something that comes out of the data, is we need more treatment options in the region.
And I've just exhaustively said that if the state and feds government would step up, and instead of bragging about how much surplus they have, is actually putting that surplus to use where it's needed, because the mental health issues that we have are driving a lot of our problems that cost us overall. And if we had those solved, we could, you know, costs would go down in other areas and everything. And I was, I think I heard that Haywood County was fifth in the state in adolescent suicide. Well, that's mental health issues. So, and we, and the lady, Ms. Widenhouse, was talking about mental health issues. And opioid probably is there to probably soothe people through that, and then they're hooked. And then, of course, crime starts and everything else that goes along with it. So I just would think a regional approach, and going back to those regional approaches that we used to have when this wasn't that big a problem, I don't think, you know? But it's just kind of been ignored and swept under the rug to the point that, and I know I'm preaching to the choir, but still, it's just, it needs to be addressed, because it will take care of a lot of other issues.
Yeah, it's all connected, right?
Yeah.
And I should say, too, a lot of times when you have settlement funds like this, they'll go to a state agency, or there'll kind of be a statewide grant program to help address this. And North Carolina Association of County Commissioners really led the way in making sure these funds would come to the county so that local folks would have an opportunity to kind of drive the strategies they wanted. So I think that's worth mentioning here as well.
It is. And I see Hannah White sitting behind you, and I know she's been asset to our county, NCACC, and been on loan to us from them. And she's been a very big help. I've asked her two or three times to make sure we are in compliance, because, you know, we have a fence around these funds, and we can only spend them in a certain way. And I think with Mayor of Clyde being here tonight, that fulfills their obligation, because they get funds as well. And so appreciate them being here. County manager, I know we talked about which plan to go to previous to this. Do you have any leaning on direction?
The programs in Option A are much faster to get put together and up and running. There's nothing that would prevent us to start an Option A program and then move over into Option B. Russ was commenting on Dogwood and their planning grant. We talked with them last week about that. So, you know, before the regional plan was considered, we were talking about all of the different, the twelve different programs in Option A. And one of the most effective, and I think the NCACC had a conference a few years ago in Greensboro, was that post-overdose response team. And there's been significant improvements. I think it was Anson County that presented it there. And we share some real common attributes with Anson. And Travis, and EMS, and Sarah in Public Health have worked on some of this. So now that the report out is complete, I think we can start moving in a direction to put some of those funds to work. Not that we haven't been. We've also been working on recovery court with the court system, and we received that treatment grant that Commissioner, Representative Pless got us. So it's not like we haven't been working on those, but we haven't tapped any of the opioid settlement funds proper. But I think you'll see us this summer and fall putting together a program to bring back to the board. And one of our counties chose Option B, and they took it to the state, and the state said, you don't want to do that. And went back and really just helped them map their strategies back on to Option A, and said, everything you want to do, you can really make that work within Option A, and your life will be a lot easier if you do that.
Is there, is there something that delineates the seven governments that chose Option B? Is, do they have an additional staff? Is it smaller population? Do they have a treatment center? What, is there any driver between why those seven chose?
If I'm making a blind guess, and these guys may have more educated guess, but I think it's the capacity. It's, you know, if you're a larger county, like a Buncombe County, saying you've got, you know, much more staff, and you're able to maybe go that route, I just, I think in rural communities, it's a heavy, a heavy lift. And I don't...
I mean, I would agree with that. I would also make an assumption that they also had a lot more dollars. So they were able to maybe utilize more strategies at one time. But yes, Option B does take kind of a robust strategic planning process that certainly, as we've gone through, we have done as a part of this regional plan. But for one specific county to do that for themselves, they would just need to pull together all the required stakeholders to have that vested conversation.
And then if we choose Option A, of the twelve, are we required to provide all of the twelve services? We can pick à la carte, the ones we want?
Absolutely. You can just pick one. You can move on from there. That's kind of the beauty of these funds, that they have such a long runway. And really, there is no bad choice. All of these options are, were chosen because they're all high-impact, great for communities who are suffering with substance use disorders for opiates. So you can pick one, and then, again, move to a different one, move to Option B strategies if that's where you want to go. So...
Yeah, that was a question you answered when you were speaking, is I thought, well, if we start with one, can we go to the other? So that's good to know.
Yeah, it's great.
You know, B has some good, good attributes, especially the education part about prevention. Maybe incorporate something into our school system to our students. Again, just to make them more aware of the dangers of this thing. So...
It also specifically addresses babies, very small children. Specifically, it says the needs of pregnant and parenting women and their babies. So that's very important for the next generation.
Absolutely. But of course, with Option A, it's not like you can't serve that population as well. It's just they're not targeted strategies. So, yeah. But I, you know, for all states, they're all getting going on this. So they're all learning as they're building the plane, as they're flying it type of thing. So I can imagine as North Carolina gets further down that road, Option B is going to be an option that a lot more counties start to do, because they're going to, they're going to have their feet under them. They're going to have done some strategies already and know what that looks like.
And Brian, how will we begin to, we, meaning y'all, begin to design, I guess, the services that, is that something that you will talk with Ira and Travis? And how will we begin to create that plan?
I guess it's, the bad news is other communities have faced this and have already implemented those. And back to the Anson County, they had developed a pretty good program, and we were able to talk with them and learn things that work there. Buncombe has another program. So I know from Travis's perspective, he's already made some of those contacts and kind of learned from mistakes that they did starting out. And I don't think it would be that tough. It's expensive, you know? And the money, the first tranche was sort of front-loaded. I think the first payment was like three-hundred-and-eighty thousand, but by year five or six, it drops to like a hundred-and-eighty thousand dollars a year. So while it's a lot of money, it's spread over eighteen years. So it's not like we can, you know, afford debt service on a huge facility or something like that. So we'll probably have to have several discussions with the board, make sure we're going down the right direction path, and bring something back to you, like I said, late summer, early fall, once we get a blueprint of what we think will work for our community.
That's good.
Russ, is this the same program you was talking about there that started out? We talked about getting a place over in Franklin, Angel Hospital or something that didn't work out?
Yeah, that was kind of the beginning of the conference. It was over in Macon County, and there was a conversation. There was a group called Pyramid that was interested in coming to the region. And I think the issue they ended up running into was they weren't confident they could get the staff they needed or the housing for the staff they needed. So they, I think that was kind of what drove them to look other places.
We got any other prospects, like any closed-down hospitals or anything, and any partners that would join in on that?
Not that I'm aware of right now, Commissioner. Thank you.
Thank you, Russ. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
The next report will be an update on Community and Economic Development website, and our program coordinator for Community and Economic Development, Hannah White. Hey, Hannah.
Hey, how are y'all? Beautiful. So we have developed a Community and Economic Development website. So I'm just going to show you how to get there from Haywood County's main page. Oh, wait, there it goes. So you go to departments, and then Community and Economic Development. We realized with all the projects that we need to do a better job about getting the message out while also creating a central place to go. So this first part is, of course, your headers, some fun pictures. So for instance, this is actually the view overlooking what will become Red Queen Creek Bike Park, some quick links to specific topics, and then some news and highlights. So we contracted with a local writer, Tina, to highlight some of the resiliency of the people of Haywood County. So this article focused on John Fletcher and his business, Suncrest, out on Jonathan Creek. The majority of his business was selling chips to the mill. So when that shut down, he had to pivot. So this is his story to tell. And so we just wanted to highlight that real fast. Continuing down, we have some important dates. Excited to see farmers' markets back on the schedule again. And our photos, so linking back to Haywood County's main page, our contact info, municipalities, and also our community partners, because it really does take a village. Speaking of village, let's navigate to broadband now, because that's everyone's favorite topic. So the broadband has really been a collaborative effort between the broadband committee, especially Dr. Porto, y'all's support, the IT and GIS department, the Southwestern Commission, and many others have been a big part of the county, being at the point it is now, where only six percent of the county remains unserved. And hopefully, we can get it even further down in this next few rounds of grants. So the broadband homepage has some updates about broadband, but then also this thermometer that kind of gives you an update on where these various grant programs are at. So if you click on one of the box, it'll give you a brief program description and also what the acronym means, because I know there's a lot of acronyms involved with the broadband process. And if you continue scrolling down, you'll see the table that has the funded grants so far, who the internet service provider that was awarded the grants, the expected completion date, and how many locations will be served with those grants. If you're wondering if a location is served, we actually, then you go to the FCC and Planning Map subpage. So the state has a planning map that tells a lot of this information, but I felt it had become a little too technical. So I actually worked with Cheyenne and the GIS department to create a Haywood-specific map that's a little more easier to digest. So the map is embedded on the webpage, but if you click on this broadband maps guide, it'll take you directly. You have a link to the webpage as well. this broadband maps guide, it'll take you directly, you have a link to the webpage as well as some information about the map, such as the legend key. And then if you keep scrolling down, so for the FCC broadband map, this is if you have an internet service provider already at your address. So just wanted to provide that website as well and tell you how to use it. And then, um, and it's important if you see your internet service provider listed with FCC, but they say they don't service you, please do an availability challenge because only unserved and underserved locations are eligible for future broadband grants. So that's my plea. Moving on to community profile. We have our core workforce and economic indicators, some information about that. The education, healthcare. So in doing research for the website, it was fun seeing how much our schools are recognized. Not only our public schools, but also our community college. Like we knew that, but it's always neat to see it in print and get their recognition. And finally, the, our top private employers and our major industries in the county. And then for business assistance. This information is not only for businesses interested in coming to Haywood County, but it's also for businesses already here. So one of the main pages is of course our 10 acre industrial site Beaver Dam up in Canton. These are given grants. So not only our local incentive, but also some state and federal grants in the center set available to growing businesses. And for entrepreneurs, just connecting them with two of the main resources in the county, our chamber and the small business center, and also listing their regular events that both of these have. And finally, just some other resources. So the outdoor economy highlights some statistics and data about how the outdoor economy is impacting Western North Carolina. Also our Raccoon Creek Bike Park, now that we can officially display Rowdy the Raccoon and the logo. Resources for our dislocated meal workers, just rearing those resources, not only for them, their families and other industries that have been directly impacted by the closure. And lastly, our housing programs with the North Carolina Office of Recovery and Resiliency. Wanted to just reiterate that like the homeowners assistance program has been put on pause by INCOR due to the overwhelming demand. They had more applications in that first week than they had funding. So while they review those applications to make sure everyone who applied was eligible, they paused it. So I just took it off the website so there would be no confusion. But if we are able to reopen those applications, I will of course put all that information back on the webpage. And yeah, so this is the community economic development website. It is a work in progress, but happy to have a tangible product. Does anyone have any questions for me?
Am I going to question?
Looks very nice. Very informative. Lots of information there.
Thanks Hannah.
Thank you.
That means you explained it very well.
Good job.
Okay. Our next report will be April 24, 2024, new hires. Brian?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In April, we had 13 new employees join our ranks. Mattson Smith, Richard Pronto, Dakota Hobbs, Dallas Bennett, Karima Cavallo, Caleb Chandler, Heather Gibson, Denon Holmes-Mora, Michelle Black, Michael Van Buren, William Taunton, William Day, and Julie Brock. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Brian. Appreciate those folks coming to Haywood County to work. Okay. The next order of business is discussion or adjustment to the agenda, but I do not have anything. Then after that will be our consent agenda. And then we have seven items on the consent agenda. And Brian, I did have a question on number five, why we were using the sole source exception to the competitive bidding process?
So we've called these systems libert systems, but they're actually made by Verteve. They're the only manufacturer and distributor of these products. And it's, it's, it's more complicated than, than probably I can explain, but these condition the air, not just for temperature, but also humidity. So, uh, so source, this is the only company that makes these systems. And, uh, and Joey's opinion, that's what we need to keep our data centers in, in tip top order.
Okay. Hey, does any other questions, is any other commissioners having questions about any of the seven items? Or comments? Okay. Here and then I'll entertain a motion. We approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any, any discussion at all? Okay. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay. That's unanimous. Okay. Our next order of business is a regular agenda. And we are requesting approval of a Southwest Commission North Carolina Home Consortium projects in the amount of $260,000 in HUD funds. And our Southwestern Commission Executive Director, Russ Harris, and project manager, Lene Schuler are here today for that. Welcome again, Russ.
Absolutely. Good to see you all again. So, um, yeah, I'll start by introducing Lene Schuler. She is our new project manager in charge of housing. We used to have Caroline LaFrenier was the person that was doing that previously. And Caroline decided to go home and raise a baby and we couldn't compete with that. But Lene's been with us for about eight months. She digs into this stuff. It's amazing how much she's learned in that period of time. And she's kind of an animal. She's kind of the kind of person that emails you at three in the morning and says, hey, I've been thinking about housing. You know, so she doesn't really ever stop working. So we're happy to have her. And going forward, she'll probably be the one presenting to you all when we have things to come to you for. So Southwestern NC Home Consortium is a consortium of the seven western counties and the towns within those counties. Couple of years ago, we were looking at ways to get funding into the region to address housing. And we were looking at HUD home funds, but the only way you could get them into a rural community was if the counties would come together, join together and form a consortium. So Haywood County is the lead entity in that consortium because of your experience doing affordable housing projects in the past. All seven counties are now members and the Southwestern Commission just administers those funds on behalf of the counties. So we come to you all about once a year to get approval of projects that our board for the consortium has recommended. This year, we're here asking for approval of $260,000 worth of projects. Usually in the past, this amount has been about 550 to 630,000 dollars. It's less this year because we have to, by federal statute, we have to do a set aside of 15% per year of our funds for community housing development organizations. And we don't have any in the region. So we've got 15% of our funds that are kind of sitting on the side. We're trying to talk to community organizations that could fit that definition and trying to get them to take that on because otherwise we've risked losing these funds. So it's kind of caught up with us this year. We have less funds to grant out. But the two that we are recommending, one is for Webster Village. These funds would go to Mountain Projects. It's a hundred thousand dollars for site development. And this is a partnership between Givens Housing, which does senior housing, Western Carolina University and Mountain Projects. So they would be hitting the senior housing, the workforce housing and the senior housing all in one project. And this is in the town of Webster over in Jackson County. So that's a hundred thousand dollars for site planning for that project. And then a hundred and sixty thousand dollars for a low income housing tax credit project in Macon County. We actually don't know who this will go to yet. There's two organizations that are applying for those funds to the state. And it will strengthen their application to the state to have this letter from us saying it's a soft commitment. You know, should you get funded, should we still have funds, should our board still decide to do this, we will fund your project. But we needed to go ahead and put a letter forward to them. So we need your approval for that amount as well. So those are the two projects we have at this time. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to try to answer them or Lene can.
Anybody have any questions? The Mountain Projects does represent Haywood and Jackson County. So.
Absolutely. And this is the first year, I mean, the majority, one of the things we struggle with is having enough capacity in the western counties to take advantage of these funds. And so up to this point, I think we just, Waynesville Housing used 200,000. They've already done that project. So this is the first time we haven't had projects going in Haywood County.
Right. We've had several in the past though.
Absolutely.
These are funds, these are federal funds.
Yes, sir.
Passed through funds. There's no local dollars.
Nope. They're, they're not.
Clarify that.
Make sure I'm telling the truth, but no.
Any more questions? Okay. I'll entertain a motion. We approve item one of the regular agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. You need a discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay. It's unanimous. Thank you, Russ.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item of the regular agenda, request approval of utility easement between Haywood County and Haywood Electrical Membership Corporation, or HEMC, to extend utilities at White Oak Landfield, 3888, 3898 Feins Creek. Road, I guess is what that is. Who present? Oh Frank, sorry Frank. Go ahead.
This is a standard underground utility easement grant. Their, uh, HEMC is going to run power from an existing transformer, which is on the site at White Oak, about 1,400 feet over to another site also on our property at White Oak. And the, the form that's submitted to you is the standard HEMC underground utility easement form for that purpose. Uh, as a matter of full disclosure, I happen to be the general counsel for Haywood EMC, as well as of course your county attorney. And I drafted this original form some years ago. It's brilliant, Ethan. And, uh, and meets all the needs and requirements of HEMC. And in this situation also meets the requirements and needs of Haywood County. This is for an underground line. It goes from a, it goes from a, um, it goes from a drop line. We call it a pole, then goes underground 1,400 feet up to another site on the, on the HEMC, uh, on the Haywood County property.
Okay.
What's the purpose of the knee drop?
I don't know. Somebody needs to, to plug in an extension cord up a little now. I have no idea why they're putting the dag gum thing in. But it, it's important. It's important. It's valuable and expensive too.
I think, I think the county manager would like to squeeze a word in anyways.
Let him try.
There's, there's two things. Uh, this line's going to the, uh, the flares, uh, that, uh, for the, the gas flares. And also there's, uh, they've located a new scale house and so they need power for that.
So your power bill is going to go up at HEMC. So, uh, once again, outstanding result for, uh, for Haywood EMC and, and the county.
Okay. Okay. Any other, just, any other questions or discussion? Okay. Here and then I'll entertain a motion. We approve item two of the regular agenda.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Okay. That's unanimous. Item number three of the regular agenda is to request approval of emergency management protection, tropical storm Fred debris removal. Bid awards for a portion of phase two for groups 20, 21, and 23, per the recommendation of McGill and Associates, and approval of a budget amendment of 959,695 dollars to accept and appropriate a portion of EWP and STRAP funds to protect, uh, to cover project costs. McGill Associates Vice President Mark Caffin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, commissioners, for having me this evening. I will try to be brief or as brief as you want me to be, but I've got a few slides here. Of course, this is the emergency watershed protection project. Is this advanced here? I got it. Okay. Okay. So again, this is phase two. I was, I guess I was here back in January for award of the phase one projects. Those, uh, projects were awarded and happy to report that those projects are complete. There are a couple of payment items on those phase one, a couple of lingering pay items and, uh, on a couple of those projects. Those are being resolved currently. Uh, so this is about phase two. Uh, phase two includes debris removal as well as stabilization. So that's where the bulk of the work is being, uh, performed. Okay. This, this is a map. I hope you have one in front of you. You might see it better. Basically, if you'll, look at the legend down there on the right, you can see what we're looking at currently. We have sites 20, 21, 22, 23, 24, and 25. The green shows you where the phase one projects are previously completed. So those are color coded for the areas we're looking at. Obviously, this is still primarily Crusoe area. We've got Pisgah Creek. We've got some in Bethel. It's, it's where the majority of these projects that are being bid currently. Uh, we've received bids for, we tried to receive bids for all six of these recently. We received bids, uh, for 20, sites 20, 21, and 23. We did not receive enough bids for 22, 24, and 25. Therefore, we cannot open bids. So we immediately re-advertised and we intend to open bids, uh, Thursday, assuming that we have bids, we received bids. Hopefully we will. Uh, of course, a lot of these projects, these six contracts were prepared so that we would have, uh, give opportunity to locals as well as on the bidding. And so we were a little surprised by not receiving more bids, but hopefully we will this time.
Is there, we talked about this in a soil and water meeting just recently. Is there something particular about 22, 24, and 25 that makes it more difficult or something that would make, give somebody bidding on it question that it would take more?
I, I don't know what that might be. I mean, if it's something, if it is, it's something specific that the contractors are coming up with. But I don't know what that, what that concern would be. Uh, it, nothing stands out to me as being completely different than the other sites. So.
Did you receive the equal number of bids on 22, 24, and 25?
Yes. All of the, uh, I think we received two. And so you see we've only received three on the others. So no.
So you need three, right?
You need three.
Well, we need three. We don't need three this time because it's second advertisement. So, so this time.
Okay.
We could technically take a, a, a single bidder, but we would hope to have more than a single bidder. But it is being, we'll know Thursday. So what I'm asking for tonight is, you can see group 20 and 21, you can see our estimate. So on 20, we were under by, you know, quite a bit and we were under even more on 21 from our estimate. And on 23, we were slightly over our estimate by some 30,000 dollars. So, uh, we're coming in pretty good with previous estimates on at least these first three. So we'll see what the next three bring. So what I'm requesting is approval of these contracts. We have reviewed, uh, the bids and we have looked at the licensing requirements and we've had conversations with contractors and looked at their experience. And they appear qualified to do this work.
So on 22, 24, and 25, you just had two, two bids?
How much?
You just had two bids on 22, 24, and 25? Okay. Were those bids at or near your number? Oh, I guess you can't say.
Yeah, we can't open them.
Okay. Sorry. Oh, that's right. Okay. You don't know. Okay.
We, we handed them back though.
Oh, okay.
But I, I have received at least one call of, of inquiring about these upcoming bids. So hopefully we have a little bit more participation.
And you'll open them on Thursday?
Yes.
This Thursday.
Before you approve these, when would you think work would begin on, on these projects, these segments?
As quick as possible. Uh, the low bidders have indicated they would like to start pretty immediately. And of course they gotta, you know, mobilize. But I have actually the notice of award documents in my bag back here. Hopefully we can get started and then contact the contractor immediately. I think we've, you know, I've actually got a schedule, uh, award contracts, uh, May to June. And so obviously the ones that we're going to take next week, we have to bring back in front of you at the next board meeting. So those are delayed that long, but we anticipate starting pretty quickly. Hopefully we have a progress meeting by the first week of June. We gotta get the contracts to the, uh, contract, contractors and let them execute them and then set a pre-construction meeting. But hopefully that happens pretty quick.
I'm tickled to see some local people in there. Is it, um, unusual to see bids come in at 46% of? I did that math right. One of them was 46 and the other one was 69% of the estimate.
That's a little concerning. And we've had, on the surface, we've had conversations relative to that point.
I mean, for them and for us.
Yes. And we've been reassured that, uh, they're willing to get the work done. Because everyone knows what happens when you don't. Those conversations have been had for what it's worth, but every, confident that they can get the work done. get the work done.
You want to go ahead? Is that all?
Yeah, I'm fine if you want to.
Okay. Has anybody got any more questions or comments? Can I, can we have a motion for, to approve item three of the regular agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. And I'll just say that I'm glad that we're kind of moving forward. I think that's been a, the length of time it's taken to get here has been a while, and so it's good to get one, so.
I'm glad we've got some local people in there, too. That's a good thing. But I'm glad we're moving. I'm like.
Yeah. Exactly. Okay.
That's a lot of difference in bids on this one, from the lowest to the highest. That's unreal.
I'm telling you.
I guarantee you, Rex will do a good job, too. So, okay. So all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Thank you very much.
That's unanimous. Thank you. Thank you, Mark. Okay. Number four is to request approval, okay, to suspend the rules to vote on accepting and appropriating the $2.204,683 million in community development block fund, block grant funding, as discussed during the public hearing. So David, you want to just, I guess you can go over that. We're kind of, these are our rules, not anybody else's, so.
So the, with the funding or the grant deadline, had to get the, back in there by May 28th, so respectfully, requesting that it's been the rules to be able to vote and appropriate for the funding for the Armory.
Okay. So can I have that motion?
Certainly think it's a no-brainer to do this, so I do make that motion to suspend the rules to be able to vote on this.
Thank you.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. And I'll just say that we've had two public hearings on this and no comments, so.
Correct.
Okay. So any other discussion? Okay. All those in favor of suspending the rules, say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay. That's unanimous. So number five is to request approval to accept and appropriate $2,204,683 in community development block grant funding, approval of associated building amendment, budget amendment, and approval of resolution authorizing signators for requisition for funds forms. And so we have Community Economic Development Director David Francis and Finance Director Christian Owen to speak to that. So this is basically just approving the budget amendment, right?
Yes, and all the lovely forms that we have to provide back to CDBG, they are very specific.
Are they? Okay. How many, how many forms are there? Just curious.
There's four copies of one form, and then there's two, two more forms that just require your signature.
Okay.
And the resolution, yes. Thank you, Amy. Everything has to be original documents, what signatures, so that's why it's complicated as it is.
Okay. 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 I'll, let's see. Can I have a motion for that?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Does anybody want to, I think we've discussed all this. Okay. So all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay. That's unanimous. Okay. I'll get to signing, okay?
Yep. You'll be here, you'll be here for a while this evening.
That's what, that's what Amy told me and warned me about.
Yeah. Thank you, commissioners.
Appreciate you getting us through that, Dave.
I think Commissioner Long mentioned earlier, you know, unfortunately, the not that need to really thank, you know, the person who really got the previous Armory project through is Tim Sisk, and he's worked very hard on getting Phase Two up to speed as well, too, but he deserves a lot of credit where we got to today, so thank you.
You know, I would like to say, I got a couple of phone calls about, just this last week, about us having an EMS base out there. I think I've talked to you about that, and, you know, it's just really an incredible building. The building is, I don't even know what year it was constructed, probably in the 60s?
70s.
70s. And then it was gifted back to the county in maybe less than ideal condition, but it still was a nice, you know, bones to start with. And then to be able to rehab it and bring it up to the condition and the use that it'll be for the county now is, in my opinion, nothing but a plus. County manager and Mr. Francis have listened to me complain since I came to the board about, we need to make this quick, and some things got in, got in the way of it and slowed the project down for a couple of reasons, nothing to do with us, I don't think, but we don't control the weather. But it is a great place to house our EMS base and has lots of potential, I think, going forward for the community. And it just, I can't stress to anyone enough, the really, the quality of that building. Buildings are just not built like that anymore, and it's a real nice addition to the county inventory, in my opinion. For nearly nothing. I think we have about $80,000 in it.
A little bit more. We've added some things with, we're developing the EMS base, but a little bit more than that, so.
But still, in comparison to.
But to bring it full circle for you, you know, as I've mentioned, that we're going to have recreation programs out there. So, you know, hopefully, we'll have pickleball out there, so you can then really come out there. You won't have to wait for the outdoor one to be built. We can come back out there for that, so, yeah. But it, but it's the, you know, the uses of the building are really unlimited, you know, and the, you know, this, you know, given, you know, I probably will never forgive Mr. Moorhead, but this was his idea to apply for this first grant of the, this project and, you know, and get through that, and it, you know, as you said, it's been, it was, it was a struggle, you know. In the middle of this, you know, we started, we started working on, you know, the Fred Flood recovery and every other thing that came up along, and it put this on, you know, the back burner, unfortunately, you know, but it came, and, you know, when y'all did your tour, you saw the effort and the effort that's been put in this, and it's been, you know, substantially a great, great project that'll last another, you know, long time for the citizens of Haywood County. Repurposing the building that we're talking about, you know, we did a great job with that. Very proud of it.
Piggyback on what you folks have said, I think the Haywood County residents should really, you know, spike the football over this one. This is a graduation.
Thank you. We voted on that.
Okay. Next order of business will be appointments, and we have to have one appointment by vote to the Haywood County Planning Board. We had two candidates, and both were very qualified.
While Frank's tabulating the score, I'd like to recognize Mr. Reeves back in the audience, and I don't, I would like to comment on item seven of the consent agenda with the funds appropriated for the senior games. We've had some great, great winners in our senior games from Haywood County, and looking forward to hearing some good things as they move on to state and national competition. So glad to have Chairman of that board here tonight, and Mr. Dove. Killing some time for you, Frank.
You have selected Ethan Ward as the, the new member of the County Planning Board for a three-year term beginning May 21, 2024.
That concludes our business. We do not have a closed session. Is there any more business that needs to be brought before the board? Here and now, I'll entertain a motion, we adjourn.
Motion adjourned.
Okay. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay.